I'd like to call the first meeting of the month of October to order. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Sure, I lost my list. Trustee Palafas?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Gata?
Present.
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Trustee Mills?
Present.
Trustee Newell?
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Trustee Palafas is calling in, so his name will be called first and every item on the agenda will be subject to a roll call vote, whether there's a vote required. Trustee Palafas, you want to lead us in the pledge? Can everybody please rise?
Sure. My pledge of allegiance. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Can everybody please remain standing? Let's have a moment of silence for all those people who were slaughtered unfortunately in Las Vegas and for them and their families and their friends. Move on to item number three, recognition of the audience. This is a time if someone has a question or concern for an item that is not currently on the agenda, now's the time to come forward. Only once, twice, three times, we'll move on. Chair, accept a motion to approve the minutes of the September 18th, 2017 meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion, there's a second. Any questions or additions to the minutes? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nope. Roll call, roll call. Hey, I just said that. Good call, Madam Clerk, good call.
Would you like me to call the roll? Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. I am suitably chastised, Madam Clerk. Move on to item number five, consent agenda, omnibus vote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. The items on this agenda are 5A, approval of the agenda; B, approval of the scheduled bills for October 2nd, 2017, equalling $1,691,341.16. C, request board approval of an ordinance authorizing sale of personal property owned by the Village of Hoffman Estates, namely surplus vehicles. Request board approval of a resolution accepting the public improvements within the Bradwell Estates subdivision for village maintenance. E, request board approval to pass along credit cards fees to the payer effective December 1, 2017. F, request board authorization to award contract for the 2017 drainage improvement project to Prime Construction, Inc., Hampshire, Illinois, low bid and amount not to exceed $45,880. G, request board authorization to award contract for 2017/2018 winter tractor rentals to Casey Equipment Company, Arlington Heights, Illinois, low bid and amount not to exceed $20,800. H, request board authorization to way formal bidding and to purchase replacement camera component for the sewer inspection system from EJ Equipment, Mantino, Illinois, sole original equipment manufacturer, in an amount not to exceed $40,019.36. I, request board authorization to award contract for masonry tuck pointing and restoration of the Village Hall Public Works Center and Fire Station 22 to Safeway Tuck Pointing Company, Displanes, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $23,155. J, request board authorization of change order one for the cured and placed lining of 244 feet of elliptical storm sewer pipe with Visu Sewer, Pawokee, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed $71,612. K, request board authorization to purchase seven metal detectors for the Sears Center Arena for MAPPA Scan Systems, Torrance, California, in an amount not to exceed $24,782.50. And we continue on. L, request other authorization to one-way formal bidding and two, award contract for the purchase of eight semi-ruggedized laptop computers and accessories for use in police department vehicles to CDS Office Technologies, Itasca, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $32,680. M, request board authorization to award a contract for stage, sound, lights, and backline equipment for the 2018 Northwest Fourth Fest to Diversified Audio Group, Inc., Addison, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $16,820. N, request board authorization to award a multi-year carnival contract to Madam Midways, Inc., Stager, Illinois, for carnival services for the Northwest Fourth Fest. O, request board authorization to weigh one, way formal bidding, and two, purchase new fitness equipment for fire stations from Direct Fitness Solutions, Mundeline, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $22,550. P, request board authorization to, one, way formal bidding, and two, purchase seven Bull Yard brand thermal imaging cameras from Denji's Fire Company, Amboy, Illinois, sole source vendor, in an amount not to exceed $50,365. Q, request board authorization to, one, way formal bidding, and two, purchase Genesis extraction tools for tower ladder 22 from Equipment Management Company, Shanahan, Illinois, sole source vendor, in an amount not to exceed $37,900. R, request board authorization to, one, way formal bidding, two, A, purchase structural firefighting clothing as follows: five sets of structural firefighting clothing to MES, Illinois, Deer Creek, Illinois, sole source vendor, in an amount not to exceed $12,525. And B, seven sets of structural firefighting clothing to Air On Equipment, Inc., South Elgin, Illinois, sole source vendor, in an amount not to exceed $17,871. We're almost out of letters, but that's everything that's on the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on any of the items? See none, can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to six, President's Report. I believe we have some proclamations, Madam Clerk.
We do.
Yes, we do, and I have the first one. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the Development Services Department, Code Division, has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by the virtue of authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Sunday, October 8th, 2017, as David Benazansky Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion a second, we appreciate the great job that Dave has done for us 20 years already, wow. Can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Mr. Gugliotta, can you give this to Dave with our thanks? Okay, who's next?
I am. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas one in every 691 babies in the United States is born with Down Syndrome, making Down Syndrome the most common genetic condition. Approximately 400,000 Americans have Down Syndrome and about 6,000 babies with Down Syndrome are born in the United States each year, and whereas awareness of Down Syndrome, while important, needs to be surpassed by the act of acceptance. I challenge you today to talk to someone with Down Syndrome, ask them about who they are and what they dream about and what their passion is, and whereas for those already comfortable engaging with people with Down Syndrome, I urge you to take extra steps to further develop meaningful relationships. Offer a job to someone with Down Syndrome, teach a skill, or provide one-on-one mentorship. Your efforts will pay off in unbelievable ways, and whereas make it a priority to get involved with local organizations such as Gigi's Playhouse, which offers free programs and services to families and individuals living with Down Syndrome. Host an event, volunteer your time, or make a donation of resources, and whereas October 1st began Down Syndrome Awareness Month, but awareness is not nearly enough. Awareness is simply acknowledging an existence, a challenge. Human beings are so much more than an existence or a challenge. Acceptance is not an action and a commitment to extend constant, consistent value, approval, and empowerment. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Down Syndrome Acceptance Month, and the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all residents and businesses to join in its observance by making a conscious effort to meet and befriend individuals with Down Syndrome, and to invite them into your lives through conversation, activities, and shared moments.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, that we really appreciate how lucky we are to have Gigi's Playhouse in Hoffman Estates, and they've really done a great job of not merely bringing awareness, but bringing acceptance for people with Down Syndrome, and that I think that's very important. We do have a motion, a second. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Is anybody from Gigi's here? If not, Monica, will you accept this in the name of Gigi's, and we will drop it off at their establishment? Thank you. Who's next?
I believe I am next. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas approximately one in five adults in the United States, 43.7 million, or 18.6 percent, experiences mental illness in a given year, and whereas 1.1 of adults in the United States live with schizophrenia, 2.6 percent of adults in the United States live with bipolar disorder, and 6.9 percent of adults in the United States, the equivalent of 16 million, had at least one major depressive episode in the past year, and whereas mood disorders, including major depressions, dysthemic disorder, and bipolar disorder, are the third most common case of hospitalization in the United States for both youth and adults ages 18 to 44, and whereas each day, an estimated 18 to 22 veterans die by suicide, and more than 90 percent of children who die by suicide have a mental health condition, and whereas one in 25 Americans lives with a serious mental health condition. Mental health professionals have effective treatments for most of these conditions, yet in any given year, only 60 percent of people with a mental illness get mental health care. And whereas one of the most important ways to support a family member is to maintain our own mental health. The healthier we are, the more energy we have for problem-solving and offering encouragement. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims October 1st through the 7th, 2017, as Mental Illness Awareness Week in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all residents and businesses of Hoffman Estates to join in its observance by visiting local libraries, curling up with a good novel, or reading silly stories out loud to children.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, we appreciate the great work our Health and Human Services Department does in helping people. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Dr. Savidra, will you accept this, please? Thanks for the great work your department does. We all appreciate it. Okay, who's up now?
I'm up. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. The homes are the locations where people are the greatest risks from fire. Whereas U.S. Fire Department responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78 percent, of all U.S. fire deaths, and whereas cooking equipment is the leading cause of home structural fires and associated injuries is the third leading cause of home fire deaths. Whereas heating and electrical equipment and smoking materials are among the leading causes for all reported home fires, and whereas home candle fires are reported to U.S. Fire Departments every 30 minutes, on an average, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas automatic fire sprinkler systems cut the risk of dying in a home fire by about 80 percent, and whereas Hoffman Estates' first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Hoffman Estates' residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to make personal steps to ensure their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2017 Fire Protection Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all the members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2017, as Fire Protection Week in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estates residents and businesses to join in in its observance.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, we appreciate the great job our fire department does, not only in fighting fires, but in the paramedic services they provide, which is the majority of their calls. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Chief, will you accept this from a grateful Village Board and citizenry for your department?
Absolutely.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
For 35 years, people.
And county.
Who's next?
I am. A proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas Hoffman Estates is a founding member of the Golden Corridor Advanced Manufacturing Partnership, and whereas manufacturing is one of the largest employment clusters in the Golden Corridor, and whereas manufacturing makes a significant contribution to the economic health of the national, state, and local economies by having a high job multiplier, and whereas our community is fortunate to be the home of small manufacturers and global toolmakers in the areas including CNC controllers, boring and drilling tools, high-speed spindles, robotics, serving industries ranging from autos to medical devices, and whereas these manufacturing companies typically export products outside of our region, bringing new visitors and wealth from around the globe, and whereas the village's economy continues to rely on the skills of employees to maintain the success of businesses and industry, and the existence of these companies in our community creates demand for spin-off industry and services, and whereas local Golden Corridor manufacturers and businesses are hosting Celebrate National Manufacturing Day on October 6th, with programs to highlight manufacturing and see demonstrations in the manufacturing labs. Be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, do hereby proclaim October 6th, 2017, as National Manufacturing Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and encourages our citizens, young and old, to explore manufacturing as a career option to help our community and state to start making things again in the health of the nation.
Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, we're very fortunate to have so many high-tech engineering and manufacturing companies in this village. Just this past week, Cranes recognized Trump for their beautiful facility, the combined factory with showroom, got a really nice write-up in Cranes. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Is Gary Skug in the audience, perchance to accept this award? You want to come up to the microphone, explain a little bit about what the organization does? Mr. Skug?
Glad to be here. I'd like to introduce Bob Mychik from, I'm sorry, Bosch Rexroth, one of our supporting companies, and I'm glad to be here. Sorry, Gary, Palafas is not here, he owes me 20 bucks.
You're not going to get it from us.
But no, actually, we're very happy to be here, and your support is fantastic. What we try to do is create a sustainable workforce here along the corridor, and that's working with local youth, with high schools, with Harper College, and with companies like Bosch Rexroth, and you want to say something?
Yes, on behalf of Bosch Rexroth, a Prairie Stone business who relies on light assembly and manufacturing to support our customer needs, just like to say we appreciate the village's support and dedication to Manufacturing Day.
Great. Have we called the roll already, Madam Clerk?
I will call again.
Call it again, just in case.
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Do you want to, you know the drill, Gary.
Hi, you again. Hi, you. Hi, friend.
So, Skuger.
Good to see you.
Where are you?
I'm doing great.
Good to see you. Miss me. Good to see you.
Got a picture here, Gary? Come on, you guys, come up here and get a picture here. Yes.
Yeah, we're missing you in Vegas, Gary.
Yeah. Maybe you'll just come along. Palafas will be there.
That's right.
Everybody ready?
We can catch up.
One, two, three. You tuck that down just a little bit. One, two, three. One more for good measure. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do you have a couple appointments this evening? One, Mike Baker, to the Commission for Disabled Citizens. Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Angela Ahuge for the Youth Commission? Chair, accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? See none, can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Angela Ahuge for the Youth Commission? Chair, accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? See none, can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. One resignation, Pam Schaefer from the Arts Commission? Chair, accept a motion?
So moved, with regrets.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, can you poll the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas?
Aye.
Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Trustee Gata?
Aye.
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Mills?
Aye.
Trustee Newell?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. We do have some events that happened in the past week. Wednesday, we had the ribbon cutting for Wausau Homes up on the north side, and Wine Wednesday took place at Jersey's, also up on the north side. On Thursday, chaired the Northwest Municipal Conference Transportation Meeting, and we had Chief Jory's 35th Anniversary Celebration. Some great cake there, very good. And that evening, we had, Wednesday evening, we had in the Hennessy Room, the annual volunteer appreciation event, which was very well-attended, and the food was excellent, and I think everybody had a great time. Friday, the 29th, we had the grand opening of the Healing Garden at the CAC, courtesy of the Schaumburg Hoffman Estates Rotary. We appreciate everything they did. Saturday afternoon, we had the Chutes and Ladders, the ball game, softball game between the police and fire, which I once again bounced the ball to the plate, but hey, it bounced over at least, and actually, the police department won. We also had two block parties that afternoon. We had one on Amherst and one on Hillcrest. And on Sunday evening, I attended the Valley Event at the Renaissance Center in Schaumburg, a very well-attended event that also had Congressman Rajah Christian Murley and Senators Murphy and Castro, and several other notable celebrities were in attendance. So, that's all I have. And we'll move on to Trustee Chemists. We'll start with Trustee Arnett.
Thank you. Sorry, was not able to attend a lot of the events during the week, but I did attend the volunteer appreciation dinner, which I agree was very well-attended, and the food was very good. Was very impressed. Sorry I missed the softball game, but Jewish holiday ranks a little bit higher.
Yeah, you had other responsibilities you had to attend to.
Yes.
Trustee Stanton?
Thank you. On the 20th of September, I was here for the fall luncheon, and I want to again thank the Commission for the Senior Citizens for putting that together. On the 21st of September, I was at the Hoffman Estates Chamber of Commerce golf outing, and I did have a chance to play, and it was a great time, actually, by all, I think, that did play. And on the 23rd of September, I was able to attend the block party on Newcastle Lane. On the 27th, I was there for the ribbon cutting for the Wausau Homes. On the 28th, I was there to congratulate our fire chief, Jeff Jory, on his 35 years being with us, and also later than the 28th, my wife and I did attend the volunteer appreciation dinner, which was a wonderful event. On the 29th, although I have to say, they ran out of dessert twice. So...
How did you know it was twice? Did you upsize?
Yes. which was a wonderful event. On the 29th, although I have to say, they ran out of dessert twice.
How did you know it was twice? Did you up twice?
Yes. Although when we read those numbers also for the mums on the table, Rita was one of the winners,
which we didn't know at the time. I didn't get that knowledge until I got back to the table
and we found out, oh, it was Rita that won. So I've got the mum, one of the mums at home.
Well, some of your family's got to be lucky, Trustee Stanton. What can I tell you?
That's right. Then, on the next morning, the 29th, I was able to attend the grand opening of the Healing Garden at the CAC. And then finally, on the 30th, I was able to attend the beginning of the Chutes and Ladders Fifth Annual Softball Game. And that's it.
Trustee Mills?
Thank you. On the 20th, I also was at the Senior Luncheon, and another great event by the Committee for Seniors. That evening, I attended the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District meeting in Wheeling. On the 21st, while I didn't golf, the mayor and I were at the golf reception, which was very nice. And give you guys credit for golfing in the heat that day. 22nd, also the Chamber had their Legislative Update Luncheon, which was a great affair. 27th, the Wausau Home ribbon cutting. 28th, the volunteer dinner. And again, thanks to all of our volunteers for the great job they do. It was nice to see all of them enjoying the evening. On the 30th, was there for the first few innings of the Chutes and Ladders game. Congratulations to the police department, finally, for coming, going ahead and winning that night, that day. Looked like everybody was having a good time, though. And yesterday, the 1st, celebrated my youngest granddaughter Ellie's first birthday.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Trustee Palafas, what have you been up to?
I've been up to quite a bit, but I think I'll take a pass from adding anything tonight.
We'll catch up with you next time. Trustee Newell?
Okay, pretty much the same. The 22nd, the Chamber Legislative Luncheon. And then on the 23rd, the block party at 1265 Newcastle. The 28th, the volunteer appreciation dinner. And I have received some comments from some of our volunteers saying about how wonderful that was, that we appreciate them and have this nice event for them. The 30th, of course, the Chutes and Ladders. And congrats to the police department. And then also, we had the block parties at 445 Amherst and 675 Hillcrest. And I think that kind of winds up the block parties for the year. I'm not sure.
We'll find out.
We'll see. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Gata?
Yeah, here we go. Wednesday, September 20th, the Senior Citizens Fall Luncheon. That was here at Village Hall. And yes, as Trustee Mills said, the Senior Citizen Commission does a great job with that every year. Every time that they even have a luncheon for the seniors. Then on Friday, the 22nd, attended the 2017 Illinois Legislation Update Luncheon at Alexium Brothers Women and Children's Hospital. And Mayor McCleod was the emcee, which he did an excellent job. Saturday, the 23rd, I was here for the museum program, but I had to leave earlier, so I didn't get to see the whole thing. Then on Wednesday, the 27th, well, there was two things going on. One was the Wausau Home ribbon cutting. And then from there, we went to Wine Wednesday at Jersey's Pizza at 2360 Lakewood Boulevard. Then on Friday, the 29th of September, the CAC Healing Garden Grand Opening at 640 Illinois Boulevard. What a beautiful, beautiful setting that that was. And they are, they have paving bricks, which is throughout that whole area. And this is a fundraiser for them. And they sell these bricks for $125. And you can have your name, either a loved one, or someone passing, or whatever. And there's spaces, I think, for around close to 4,000 bricks. And I think they only have, what, maybe 50 bricks?
Yeah, there's plenty of bricks to go.
They have many bricks to go. So keep that in mind. That's a worthy cause. Let's see, Saturday, September 30th, oh yeah, the Chutes and Ladders Fifth Annual Softball Game. And the police department won 11 to 1, which is one echelon score for it. Congratulations to all of you. We also had the, oh, we had two block parties to go to on that Saturday. One at 445 Amherst Lane, and the other one was at 675 Hillcrest Boulevard. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Gata. Move on to 6C, Village Managers Report.
Nothing to add, other than I'm getting counseling because the police department won.
Didn't know you felt that strongly about it.
I was just shocked, completely amazed, after the dominance of the fire department.
Well, anybody has a bad day. 6D, Village Clerks Report?
During the month of September, 18 passports were processed. So it was like low compared to what we've normally been having. And 131 FOIAs came through.
We do get a lot of FOIAs.
We do.
Move on to 6E, Committee Reports of General Administration Personnel. Trustee Arnett?
The agenda for the upcoming meeting for the General Administration Personnel Committee for October 9th, 2017, we would actually start off with a roll call to, we have our forum. Then we would go to approval of minutes for September 11th, 2017. Then we would start off with four new items and new business. Number one would be discussion regarding legislative update. Number two would request acceptance of cable TV monthly report. Number three, request acceptance of Human Resources Management Monthly Report. And number four, request acceptance of Legislative Operations and Outreach Monthly Report. Then we would go to President's Report, anything in other items in review, and then we would ask for an adjournment.
Thank you, Trustee Arnett. Transportation and Road Improvement, Trustee Mills?
Transportation and Road Improvement Committee will immediately, will begin immediately following General Administration and Personnel on October 9th. After approval of the minutes, we'll have two items under new business. One being a request authorization of change order number one for additional construction costs for the 2017 surface patching project to J.A. Johnson Paving Company of Arlington Heights, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $11,000. The only other thing is acceptance of Transportation Division Monthly Report. If anyone has anything after the President's Report to come before the committee, then we will adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Planning, Building, and Zoning, Trustee Stanton?
Yes, after the Transportation and Road Improvement Committee will have a roll call. Hopefully, we'll have a quorum. I think we will. And approval of minutes then for September 11th of 2017. Under new business, we have five items right now. First is a staff update on the next level northwest. Second is a request by Huntington Hoffman LLC for extension of preliminary concept site plan approval for Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins, with a drive-through at 1600 Elgonquin Road. Third is a request acceptance of the Department of Development Services Monthly Report for Planning Division. Fourth is the acceptance of the Department of Development Services Monthly Report for Code Enforcement Division. And fifth is the acceptance of the Department of Development Services Monthly Report for Economic Development and Tourism. I think the President probably will be talked out by then. And we have nothing in other items in review, so then we'll adjourn.
Thank you. The Dunkin' Donuts thing, the donuts got to be pretty stale by now. This has been kicking around for a long time, so we'll see what comes of that. Thank you, Trustee Stanton. Move on to seven, Planning and Zoning Commission Reports. Chair Person Combs, you have the floor.
The whole thing?
The whole, you got the whole floor.
Good evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not recommend for approval or request by William Pulvermacher owner for a 350-square-foot variation from Section 9-3-6-J of the zoning code to allow a shed to be 500 square feet instead of the maximum 150 square feet at 825 Basswood Street with one condition. There were four As, five Nays, one Absent. This has been continued from September 18th.
Okay, so the recommendation of planning and zoning is to turn this down. Is a petitioner here? Is petitioner, would you come up and, you want to say anything, sir? Say identify yourself for the record, name and address.
I would like to. My name is William Pulvermacher. I'm here with my wife Denise. I did listen to the presentation of it on the 11th on video. I just got back from traveling, so thanks for hearing me today. I must have done a very poor job, but because what was presented, all of the things that were unique to me and made it essential were left off of that in what I thought in that presentation to you. So I can't go over the whole thing, but it is, it is larger than it should be. It's 450 square feet. It's not 500. That might not be the mattering point. It's, I only have a little over a 250-square-foot garage, my permanent garage. And I recently have had some health issues that have caused that to be consumed. I have total kidney failure and dialysis at home. I get a pallet full of supplies on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. And those supplies have consumed portions of my home, therefore pushing me out of my garage. So I made my shed bigger. So the parts that are wholly unique to me and make it, you know, just, like I said, unique are those items. So it's due to my illness, which is, it's not, I mean, I can live a life, but I can't. I mean, I have these things I have to take care of for the unforeseen future. And then it pushed me out of the portion of my house. It's only, I am the largest, one of the largest lots in Parcel A, and this is relatively small in comparison to what you would put, if you put 150 square foot on a, say, a quarter acre. I'm near over nine tenths of an acre, so the variance would be, it's very hard to see. It doesn't look out of place. So thank you for letting me share.
No problem. Thank you, sir. Chair would accept the motion on this? Aye vote would be to sustain the denial by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Yes, do you have something to say?
Yeah, wasn't there some discussion that you were planning to revise your plans?
Yeah, well, I didn't understand. I was trying to figure out a way to do something, and I made some mistakes. I thought it was just a way to re-address, I guess. Right now, it is the way it is. So I made a mistake when I asked for the way of the continuance. It just, I had to travel, and I couldn't be here. So I wanted to be here when we all talked about it.
Why do you have to go so high up, too, on the?
Well, what it was, is it was going around existing sheds I already had. And so it's kind of just consuming the existing.
And you're going to leave the old sheds within?
No, no, no. They're going to go away. They're going to get tore away. What I did was I put the, I built the thing around it, and then I'm going to tear the inside out because I had some property damage with the wind and everything before that. And so what I was doing is going to repair it. And then one thing led to another, and I just decided to build around it. Sorry about that.
But you did not obtain any permits prior to starting?
No, and I understand that is wrong, and I apologize for that. And I understand that if there's fines or things, I do respect that and would need to take care of that.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay, and you, Trustee Gata?
Yeah, I noticed on here that one of your neighbors, 805 Basswood Street, are they here tonight?
Yes, he's here.
Would they like to come up?
Yes.
Please?
Sure, come up to the microphone and introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Denise Pulvermacher, his wife. I live there. We've lived there for over 20 years. Just to get a little more of our story, we have tried several attempts in the 20 years we've lived there to try to make some extra space for ourselves. It has not gone well with the village. A lot of things were denied. I don't want to get into old hashings or anything like that. But at this point, I was a little disappointed in how it went a couple weeks ago when people were telling my husband that he shouldn't really, should get rid of things because his health is going to deteriorate. I'm sorry. I love my husband. And if any of you ever had to deal with someone who has kidney failure, I hope you never do. And we are doing everything in our power to keep his health good. We're doing home care. We're looking into kidney transplants. We're looking into being a donor. So I just wanted to say for the record, I don't think it was fair for people to judge how we should live and what we have to live with. You know, there was some comment about get rid of your stuff, do this, do that. We've lived with a one-car garage for 20 years. 20 years. So I just wanted to say that, and that this is only because of his health issue, that we need some extra space. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, did you want to come up and say something? Just give us your name and address for the record?
Good evening, board members. James, 805 Basswood Street? 805 Basswood Street. Commenting on this shed, again, as it was pointed out, with the necessity of the shed, it was by the own petitioners mentioning that this was for motorcycles, snowmobiles, and other toys so that the grandkids could have somewhere to put all these toys and intrinsic things that they have at the property. This is a single-family home. They already have an existing shed, a tent, and numerous other structures on the property for storage. They have a one-car garage, that's right, that they've had for 20-plus years wherever they've lived there. I don't think that storing medical supplies, as it was pointed out in front of the commission, that's not the necessity for this garage shed that they're putting up. And I want to point out that a 500-square-foot, you mentioned this new home builder, 500 square feet, that's a two-and-a-half-car garage in the backyard in an older subdivision in Hoffman Estates that has a lot of flooding issues. It's being put in a swale where I was told by the village engineer that that's going to enhance more flooding in people's backyards, which is what I don't want. Besides the fact that I have to look at a two-and-a-half-car garage that isn't on an improved surface. There's no concrete. There's no driveway to it. And there's no need for it. There's, they have the ability to add to the back of their garage. They could make it a tandem garage, which would be in compliance with current village ordinances and laws. And I just want the board here to take that into consideration and to carry what the commission has already put forth in that this isn't allowed. This hasn't been even approved, let alone asked for. It was put in, and it's 99% complete without any permits, no type of direction. It's just, it doesn't set a good precedent for the village. And I really hope that this board follows the approval or the disapproval of the commission on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Angela Para. I reside at 805 Basswood Street. James is my husband. I have been there 15 years. I don't want to go and do what they did and say, "We need room because I'm sick." April 4th, I died in my home. If it wasn't for the paramedics who revived me and having open-heart surgery, I wouldn't be here today. I had to move in my daughter in her full one-bedroom apartment. We didn't add on any kind of structures. What we did was we emptied our house to put in her things so that she can take care of myself and my ailing husband. And I forgive you for, sorry for my speech, but since therapy and open-heart surgery, I've not been the same. However, they have always done things without permits. As they were told to stop work, they still worked on it that weekend, the weekend after, and the weekend after that. And there's a roof on it. There was no roof when a work order was stopped. If you need to, they have a three-bedroom house. They have a son who lives across the street with a three-car garage that they can maybe move a motorcycle or a snowmobile that they need to put in the new shed that they need in the back. We are not asking for anything, but when we look out our back, maybe neighbors across the street can't see it, but plainly from our house, you can see this big, huge barn-like, along with tents from the other neighbors. We, we're not asking for them to rip it down, but we're asking for them to at least get a permit. They did their kitchen without a permit. We had to phone walls down to studs. It's just things were not done properly, and they should be. That is how I thought when we received our book from when we moved into our village. We followed our ordinances. However, they've been there 20 years, and they've never followed theirs. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, you want to come on up again?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. Staff, staff for the village did say there was no problem with the size and location of it, setbacks off of any flooding areas. There's no problems with it, according to the staff report. And they were out there and visited it. And so, you know, I'm not trying to throw stones or anything. It's just basically, it's a unique need, unique to us. And, you know, I think it follows all the conditions required for a variance. But thank you for listening.
Wait, before you-
Yeah, please.
Trustee Mills?
You made some comment in the beginning about that the correct dimensions were not put into the report?
Yeah.
How are they different?
Well, the, I, I looked at it again closely, and it says 500 square feet, and it's not. It's 440, a little under 450, which it's 10%, but that's less. So it's less. It was, what it was is, I don't know if you have the pictures of it or not, but it just assumes the L shape around what the units that were already there. So it was just built around what my house was there. If you look at my plat of survey, they were there since I bought it. They became damaged. Instead of repairing them the proper way, I just decided to go around them. And that's the consumption of space.
What's with the tenting in front? Looks like you have tenting in front of the one?
No, no. What it is right now is a tarp over the top of it. Because I, because I didn't, I had, it was exposed.
In the front also?
Yeah, that's where it's exposed. The whole thing's exposed.
All of this?
It's a tarp.
This is a tarp?
Yeah. It's just, it's just a tarp to hold it, to keep the weather out right now. It's a short-term fix. Because I did stop. I threw the, what was probably heard was me putting the tarps up and the boards and things to hold the tarps up. Yes, that was, that was done.
And now a question for staff. The way he is constructing it, is it within what's required by code?
The physical construction itself, obviously, setting the size aside, we do have plans. None of what's been built has been formally inspected by our inspectors. So they will come out. There may be, need to be physical changes. Obviously, things like the tarps and that are, as he's saying, would be temporary. Those would need to be removed. A proper roof would have to be put on, and everything would have to be sealed up properly.
Green-treated posts, are those allowed? Those don't hold up very well?
Honestly, I'm not sure.
I had an email from Norm that said that the post in Gert would be acceptable. I looked in the codes. It said 102 mile an hour wind load, and so that's what, it will withstand the wind load.
It's possible that what's there, a lot of what's there is probably usable as part of the shed. There may need to be some modifications. That's something our inspectors would have to look at in the field.
Okay, now a question for the chairman. Eva?
Yes.
What were the concerns of the commission?
There were concerns about the necessity for the size, concerns voiced by the neighbor basically outlining what was said.
Okay, was there any concerns on the actual construction of it?
There was nothing raised with respect to the construction, so there were no comments.
It was mainly the size of it?
Yes.
The large, okay.
And the necessity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Trustee Gata.
Yeah, well, I mean, we heard somebody that opposed, and this is 845 Basswood Street.
825.
825.
845, okay. Are they in the audience?
No, they're not. 845 is not there.
The neighbors to the north, they couldn't make it, but they're, they have no problems with it.
And what about 840 Hawthorne Lane?
They're fine with it. They were, they were the neighbors across the street. They couldn't make it tonight either, but they were fine with it, too. They could, they see no problems with it. None of the surrounding neighbors, other than the parents, have any problem with it.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Yes. Nothing else from anybody? Trustee Arnett.
Just one, and I can't really tell by the platypus survey, is there any kind of flooring in the storage shed protecting the grass?
No, there isn't. There's just grass.
Currently, it's a dirt-
Yeah, sir, you're gonna have to come up to the microphone and talk.
I'm sorry. We're doing telemarks.
Yeah, currently, it's a dirt floor. I would put any condition that would need to be in it to make it ready, but currently, it was just going to be a shed with either a wood or a dirt floor to, to be able to store the things that I store.
Mr. Norris, you have something?
Because it was built without a permit, the construction is not, nothing that at this point in time the village would have reviewed, commented on other than potentially where it's located. If the board approves a variance, the plans will have to be submitted. All the codes will have to be met. It will be fully inspected before a final approval is granted.
And the plans were submitted after the fact, and-
Right, but I'm saying-
Right, yes.
We can't issue a permit until a variance is granted. We can't inspect until that all occurs. At that point in time, there'll be a thorough code review, and we'll make sure that it's done, has been or will be done the correct way, if the board grants the variance.
Okay, anything else up here? See none? Trustee Newell.
Sorry, I forgot. Just that if this goes forward or whatever, they're going to correct the sizes of whatever, 'cause everybody's like saying all these different numbers.
Yeah, I-
It's like, what size is this shed really going to be? I'm sorry, I'm-
It already is. The dimensions on the paperwork are correct. It was the math in calculating the square footage was incorrect. All the dimensions on the paperwork are correct.
And we'll double check it.
It was the math in calculating the square footage that was incorrect.
Okay.
If you grant a variance at 500, and it only turns out to be 440, then we're fine. If it turns out when it's recalculated to be more, more obviously, it's an issue.
Yeah, it's-
We do have some nuances in how we calculate, and how other villages do, too. It's not always exact, like what you're talking about, following the lines.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, is anything else up here? Trustee Stanton.
If we grant a variance, can we ask whether this be like 300 square feet versus 500 or 440 square feet, or how does that work?
You can, the petitioner's request is for what it is. You can ask the petitioner if they would accept less than that. If they say yes, then they'd have to resubmit plans and redo all the construction. That would be their, their choice. I guess the board could unilaterally do that, but I'm not sure it gets you where you want to go unless the petitioner would say, "Yes, we'll live with 300, 350 square feet."
Yeah, I'm just trying to stay, I mean, the whole thing now is, I'm less than a regular two-car garage would be allowed. If I was allowed to have two garages or a two-car garage, it would be 750 square feet. I'm less than that right now, even with the two garages. So, I mean, I mean, it seems, it seems within reason, within the size of my yard and, you know, the need for it. I'm not, again, perspective-wise, I'm not big, and I'm not definitely over combined.
Well, I guess, the comment I would have, once it's done, it's done.
Yeah.
Whether you sell the property or not, it doesn't go away because you sold the property. It's still there. It's gonna be there for the long foreseeable future.
The decision the board has to make is whether or not the petitioner has fulfilled what is required for hardship, for a variance.
Right, and I was trying to figure out my uniqueness being that where the size and location and my conditions.
Right. We're not, I don't want to get into debate.
No, no.
Uniqueness is not necessarily legally hardship, and to be honest, storage of, I understand the medical stuff, but storage of snowmobiles and any other recreational item is not considered hardship either.
I didn't, I don't own a snowmobile, but that's fine.
I, but there's been testimony that's been granted.
So all I'm saying, yeah. Well, having a garage space, though, is, is not a hardship. I just, I guess, garage space in general to store things like my lawn mowers. I keep my yard, my yard upkeep is, is important, I think. And that's what the village would normally say is upkeep of your yard, and so I have a garden tractor and lawn equipment and stuff to keep my garden going and all kinds of things.
And that's up to the board to decide.
That's all I'm saying. It's not just a motorcycle and balls.
Thank you.
But thanks for taking the time.
Anything else from up here?
Thank you.
If not, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
I have a picture if the board would like to see in relationship to what was there and what's been built around it along with-
Come to the microphone, please.
Along with some tents and some other structures that I'm looking at in the backyard. Not 845 Basswood, not on Hawthorne. These are structures that I have to look at, and then where is the limitation going to be put? If we're going to allow 500 square feet, the next guy who wants 550 square feet, where are we gonna draw a line? That's what I thought we had the ordinances and the codes for. But I do have pictures if we need to get a general idea of what we're illegally putting over what was already there, as well as these tents that are in the backyard.
The board has pictures.
Okay, as well as these tents that I've called the village up numerous times, and I'm still kind of wondering why I'm paying almost $500 a month to store my cars when we could put all these tents in the backyard. I'm really concerned about where we're going in the village with ordinances and compliance here. It's great that my neighbor keeps his lawn up. That's great, but as his testimony has stated, he's not storing medical supplies in this shed. This is going to be for a tractor. My wife, who had a stroke on April 4th of 2017, she uses a push mower. I have the biggest yard in Parcel A. She uses a push mower up until April 4th of 2017 and walks that grass-cutting job. So this isn't a piece of property that's 50, 70 acres in size. It's a little more than three-quarters of an acre, so I don't see the necessity for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have a motion, a second. Anything else from up here?
Just reiterate, this is a yes-no vote?
Yes. A yes is concurring with the denial by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Mayor McClellan.
Aye. Motion carried. The request is denied. Thank you. Madam, Chairperson, what else you got for us here?
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval a request by Cabela's Wholesale Inc., owner for preliminary and final platypus subdivision of Lot 4A 5D 2A 1 in Prairie Stone, located at 5225 Prairie Stone Parkway. 10 As, 1 Absen.
I, there's a memo from the village board that the Mylar with all the signatures is not available, and supposedly, we can pass it without that, being contingent upon that. I'm not really a big fan of that. I like everything done, but that's just me. So if someone wants to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion, a second. Okay. This is on 7B. Is there any discussion?
Wait, 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 wait.
Those darn attorneys.
The memo that came out was going to be that it's not being approved now. It's being, according to the memo, approved if the appropriate Mylar is produced within seven days. So that would be a different motion than the one that's on the table right now.
Could wait 14 days. Trustee Mills.
I was gonna say, couldn't we defer this to a special next Monday night?
That sounds good. Let's see if they're serious about getting it in.
Sure.
That's, well, there's a motion on the floor-
We can throw out a motion?
If they wish to withdraw it.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll agree to withdraw.
Then I'll make a motion that-
Can I say a word?
Well, first of all, can I say a word?
Yes, say a word.
Sure.
Everybody's got a word.
Everybody can say a word.
If we continue that, don't we have to continue the other two as well?
We'll continue, oh, yeah.
All right.
That's fine. Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Alpesh Patel. I'm a member of GH of Hoffman Estates LLC, so that'll be part of, I guess, B on, or C on here. But I've been in talks with Cabela's and their lawyers. There was an issue with the name, I guess, on the Mylar, whether it was Cabela's Wholesale Inc., or, I don't know what the other name is right now.
Cabela's Retail Inc. or Cabela's Wholesale?
Yes, and so the Mylar had the wrong name. The lawyer, everything is fixed. Cabela's had to sign it and mail it over to you, and it's supposed to come tomorrow morning.
Well, we can deal with it next Monday.
Yeah. We're just gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we defer these items-
B, C, and D?
Yep, to a special, special board meeting next Monday evening pending the receipt of the Mylar.
I'll second it.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Is there any discussion on this? See none? Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas. Gary.
Hello.
Wake up. Gary, you there?
Well, move on.
We lost him.
Okay. Here we go.
Did we get disconnected?
No, you disconnected him, Jim.
He just didn't, there we go.
There he is.
You're on the speaker.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Mayor McClellan.
Aye, motion carried. We'll hear this, a special board meeting next Monday night. Okay, move on to A, additional business. Ate A. Request board approval of an ordinance amending Section 8-3-22. Number of licenses of Article III alcoholic liquors of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code. Decrease the number of Class A license Stone Eagle Tavern and increase the number of Class A licenses for Kyo and Japanese Steak and Sushi 4680 Hoffman Boulevard. Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Is there any discussion? See no discussion? Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Mayor McClellan.
Aye, motion carried. Nine adjournments. Chair, accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Second.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Any discussion? See none? Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.